Hi, and welcome to the latest edition of Salisbury Speaks. My name is John Housenitis, and this time of year, March, April, and May, town managers, mayors, superintendents, school committees, city council, board of selectmen, finance folks are all putting together the budget for the next fiscal year, which starts on July 1st. And no different here in Salisbury in the Triton Regional School District. We're very happy to have as a representative of the Salisbury Triton School Board and School Committee, Monique Grillick. Monique, welcome to the program.
Glad to be here, John.
As you know, the school committee of Triton is proposing increased budget. Obviously, every year costs go up, and there's a great deal of concern. Just the Daily News the other day suggested a headline, "Triton School Budget Raises Concerns in Salisbury." And obviously, the job of the school committee and obviously the folks involved in the school system is to sell to the rest of the community the need and the reason for the great need and the increase in the budget. Now, just from the information I've gathered, the school committee has voted a budget of $42.1 million, and I know a hearing was just held as we're taping this last night. Can you talk about first, the process of putting together that $42.1? Because I remember as a member of the school committee in Lawrence during the 80s and 90s, people would come to us, the principals would come to us, the department heads would come to us, and eventually they pass it on to the finance folks and the assistant superintendent and on to the superintendent. He comes in with his budget that he presents to the school committee, and obviously it's your decision to say yes or no, and to change that, alter it, increase, decrease areas. How does that process work here in the Triton District?
Well, in Triton, we have, I think, a very inclusive process. We start at each individual school with the school improvement councils and the principals, and they develop a budget. This year it was zero base budget because we knew that there were going to be some concerns in the end, so we went back right to the beginning and looked at everything we absolutely needed. And we put together a budget where we had high needs, low needs, must-do, high risk, five or six different scenarios. And starting in January, it's the third week in January, each of the principals comes before the school committee. We do it like Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday nights, and they present their budget, and it's presented in a format of PowerPoint and handouts, and we ask questions about it, and we, you know, present our opinions. Then afterwards, we look at the budget again, the school committee does, and we approve a tentative budget. Then we have hearings. We've had two hearings actually, because our budget was more than we actually, the proposed budget, tentative budget, more than we thought was coming. We knew it was coming, but not, you know, in the end, you never know how it's going to be.
Sure.
So we had two hearings, February 7th, and we had one last night. And the one that we had February 7th, we had a massive turnout.
Good.
It was standing room only. And most of the feedback, I would say, I took notes on it, we actually got 25 people to speak, and just about all of the feedback was positive. People were saying, "We know that you have to, this is what it costs, this is what you have to do, there's no frill in this budget." We do have concerns. Obviously, the people that are managing the money for the towns obviously have concerns, and we've met with them, we meet with them regularly every month, we meet with the selectmen.
Keep them in the loop, obviously.
Yes, we do, because, you know, when we have big projects coming up like Triton, the stadium, that was, you know, almost $4 million. You can't make decisions about spending that kind of money without input from the people that are providing the money.
Sure.
So we meet regularly with the finance people from each town and the selectmen, and we started talking about this budget in October.
Now, the Triton District, you know, and I'm sure many of the folks out there know, maybe they don't know, it's Triton because it's three districts, so it's Newbury, Rowley, and Salisbury.
Right.
And the total population this year of the Triton District, I guess pre-K to 12, is somewhere in the area of 2,400 students.
Yeah, but, yeah.
And Salisbury's number of that 2,400 is what approximately?
902.
902 of the 2,400.
Yeah.
Populations, I imagine, across the state, unless you're in a big city like a Lawrence or other cities, are probably going down. I'm sure this case is the same here in the Triton District.
Well, if you look at school projections, I know mostly this eastern part of Massachusetts, western Mass is even worse. The projections for the next 10 years going forward, starting in 2010, were to decrease about 20% over a 10-year period. So Triton, Penntucket, Hamilton-Wentham, Manchester, everybody's school population is going down. This year, ours did not go down. It's almost, we're off by two kids, so it's very unusual, but typically we go down.
So the folks out there, you know, preparing their, you know, family budget, obviously, things go up, cost of electricity goes up, cost of water goes up, cable vision goes up, the phone costs go up. What's gone up in the Triton District that has necessitated an increase to bring it to $42.1 million projected?
All right. Well, first of all, that budget includes all of our special needs cost. Last year, we lost, we had some children age out, so when they're 22 years old, they no longer require services, and they become the fiscal responsibility of other agencies. So we actually stayed pretty even. But this year, because of, and it's not really an influx, it's a lot of kids coming into the district, our costs are projected to be about $1 million more.
In special needs?
Special needs. So we do have, we do have one program that we've proposed in the budget, which we anticipate will cost about $160,000, but will save us $495,000. That involves-
Because those students would normally go out of district.
They'd normally go out of district.
Which means out of Triton to some other private school-
Right.
-where you're paying tuition.
Right, so those nine kids-
Would stay in the school district.
Well, a few might have to go out of district, you know, because you can't have for that type of population.
Can't have all the services.
You don't have a program fits all, one program fits all. So we anticipate having maybe five or six kids in that program, two aides, and a behavior specialist, and, you know, we're going to staff it properly so that we can save that money. We're also saving the transportation money, because every one of those kids that goes out of district, they cost at least $10,000 to $20,000 to transport, so-
Where are the other increases? So special needs is an area?
Special needs is an increase. We negotiated a new contract for the teachers, and I know people say, "Well, you know, why are the teachers getting erased?" You have, we are right in the middle of teacher salaries. We have to be competitive.
Sure.
If you, I mean, if you are in a district offering low salaries, your teachers are going to flee. They're just like everybody else, they go where the money is. The other cost, and people need to understand this, healthcare, including your retirees, dental insurance, health insurance, costs the district about $6.5 to $7 million a year. This year, we projected an increase of $600,000 to pay for everybody. The Triton employees pay 70%, Triton District matches 30%, which is about right for every district. I worked in four districts, that's what you pay.
Right.
20 to 30%. The contractual increase is $921,000 for this year, and then we have step increases for the teachers, so that's $166,000, roughly a million. You always budget for your step increases, that's part of your budget. And every year, you have your contract increases. So this year, we negotiated three-year contract, roughly about 2.25%.
So special needs, contract, negotiations, what other?
Insurance.
Insurance.
Those are the budget busters.
Transportation?
Um, our transit-
You got a big increase?
We increased about $75,000, which increases, maybe 71, which increases our sp-
Does the state reimburse that entire transportation budget, do you know?
Well, that's the, that's part of the problem, right now, that we're working on. When the regional districts were formed, you know, they promised you everything.
Sure.
They go, "Oh, you know, we'll help you with this, we'll help you with that." One of their promises was, "We'll help you with regional transportation, we'll reimburse you 100%." That has never happened. Usually, it runs between 58% and 75%. Last year, I think we were reimbursed 65%. If we were reimbursed at 100%, it would mean about $300,000 for us. So, you know, that's, that's money. But the, people need to, I want to help people understand that school systems have a lot of mandates, special ed mandates. We educate children that have high medical needs, that's expensive. You need to have aides, you need to have teachers, you need to have specialists, you need to transport. None of that is cheap, you know? You can't do it.
Now, what, I know the town manager was quoted in the article, I saw in the paper, that if the budget goes through with tremendous increases that are proposed, I know you have three different levels of budgets that you're looking at-
Yeah.
-and we'll talk about that in a minute.
Yeah.
He's talking about, quote, "Significant layoffs to town personnel in terms of police, fire, EPW." Obviously, no one wants to see that, but-
Right.
How are those three different budgets different, the three budget scenarios you're looking at?
How are the budgets different? All right, I'm going to try to simplify, because I know I talk a lot. The budget we proposed involves an increase of about 10% in each town's assessment. That budget leaves everything the same, basically, except for that new special ed program-
Right.
-a new special ed teacher at Newbury, new special ed teacher at Pine Grove, and changing the math specialist from part-time to full-time. Very minimal. The special ed teachers, we have no choice about. You have to, you have to follow the law. The second scenario is based on, if we use last year's money, you know, just increased 4% like we did last year, that would result in 36 layoffs. It would increase each town's assessment by about, Rowley, 400, Newbury, 500, Salisbury, not quite, 600.
600,000.
600,000. If we do the budget that Rowley, the Rowley Selectman came to us and said, "We are out straight," and believe me, we understand this, they're building a new school, they're renovating a new school for $34 million. They're part of the Triton assessment, the stadium assessment. They need a new police station, fire station, they have a lot of bills. They came to us and said, "We have new growth of $450,000, we can afford to give you $225,000." So we made a budget saying, "If we took half of the new growth that we, that the towns can give us, that would be a 2% increase, and would lay off 51 people, full-time equivalencies."
That's the second, that's the second-
That's the third scenario.
That's the third option.
So you've got a 10% excess-
Right.
-a 4%, and a 2%.
So where does that 400, the $400,000, $485,000, I'm sorry, $430,000 increase is in which of those three scenarios?
Uh, that's in the second scenario.
The second scenario.
Yeah, that's based on a level budget, but still cutting, because you still have to cut people because your costs have increased.
Now, have those, you talk about 36 possible layoffs, have those positions been determined yet, what they would be, or is that down the road a bit?
No, that's down the road. That's, you know, that's given that we don't have the money-
Right.
...to work with. So they'll probably increase class sizes. We have favorable class sizes.
You know what the average, I don't know if you know all-
We average about, it depends, elementary level, probably 18, 19. We have some classes with less, some classes with more. But the thing you've got to look at with class size is, what is the population filling those classrooms? It's very, very different from, if you're filling a class at Salisbury Elementary where there's a lot of, not a lot, there might be some difficulties.
Sure, yeah.
You're trying to get kids to school, you've got a few kids that are homeless, you have kids with a little trauma. That's not everybody.
Yeah, right.
It's minimal compared to some systems I worked at, you know? But there's still, you don't want 30 kids in a class-
Of course, yeah.
-because the other kids can't learn.
Sure.
That child needs what he needs, and we don't want to be in a position to say, "Well, that kid might need what he needs," but we, you know, we have a lot of kids to take care of.
We're going to take a brief break. Before we take the break, I do want to make a pitch for the, speaking of Triton and students, there is a scholarship available. The Salisbury Democratic Town Committee has a scholarship program, it's been running for nine years now, and if you have a senior from Salisbury in your family, that person is eligible for a Triton scholarship to be awarded by the Salisbury Democratic Town Committee. Applications are now available at the guidance office and the guidance department at Triton, and the deadline for that application is, to be submitted is April 15th. So please contact the guidance department at Triton if you have a senior who'll be graduating and going on to a two- or four-year college from Salisbury. We'll be right back with more of the Triton School Budget with school committee member Monique Grillick in just a moment, as Salisbury Speaks. Don't go away. Welcome back to Salisbury Speaks. My name is John Housenitis, very happy to have with us a member of the Triton School Committee from Salisbury, Monique Grillick. Monique, we're talking about this budget of $42-plus million. How does it get approved? I mean, obviously, the school committee approves it, and now it goes on to three towns. What's the process in those towns?
Typically, the school budget is approved at a town meeting. The townspeople get to say whether they like the budget or not.
Okay.
And we haven't had, well, I've been on four years, to my knowledge, we haven't had any problems. But this year, because of the amount, the selectmen are saying they're going to ask for an override to be put on a ballot. The people will vote to see if they want the override.
Now, the override, I remember in Lawrence, I remember being in Lawrence on the school committee and campaigning with signs, "19-2 just won't do, 19-2 just won't do." At that point, it was $19 million. And of course, all the overrides get shot down in Lawrence. But the override, just in the method of explanation for people at home, is Prop 2.5 passed in this state in 1981, and it allows people in the city or town to raise their expenses or their expenditures-
Their levy.
-their levy by 2.5% of the increase of the assessed value this year versus last year. So assuming the property values in Salisbury were worth $100 million last year, and this year, they go up to $105 million. That $5 million increase of the assessed value can only go up by 2.5%. 2.5% of $5 million gives you the right to increase your budget by that amount of money. So anything above that has to go before the voters for an override.
Right.
But that's basically the assessment.
Right.
Now, does it go first to the board of selectmen for an approval? The budget, does the budget of Triton have to go before the selectmen for their blessing first, or?
No, no, the selectmen decide that there's going to be an override. They decide, with the finance committee or the warrant advisory here in Salisbury, they decide how they're going to pay for this. And that's, you know, the issue right now with Triton, because all three selectmen, boards of selectmen, have said that that's probably the route they're going to have to go.
Now, to approve the budget, it just requires two of the three towns to approve it.
Three towns, right.
So if Newbury and Rowley say eventually down the road at some point, yes, and Salisbury still says no at town meeting, it still goes through? Or if any one of the three towns says no, it still goes through with two others?
Right, and if it goes through, and they haven't had an override, I mean, they only have, they can tax 2.5% of their assessed value, so, you know, like you said, if it's $100 million and their costs are so much, they have to cut the police.
Somewhere.
They have to cut somewhere, and there's no-
So what do, what do-
Unless they go into their stabilization.
So if you was at home, what do layoffs mean in terms of the schools?
Layoffs mean that depending on which budget we adopt, or, the budget that we adopt might not be one of these budgets, it might be a hybrid. But if you're looking at, say, 30 to 40, 50 layoffs, it means that you're, in terms of teaching, because teachers work with seniority.
Sure.
Hopefully, you'll get people to retire, you know, so that's-
At the higher level.
-at higher levels, because they cost the most.
Sure.
And, but even if they, when you lay off, you're not really saving that much money. You are saving about $45,000 per person, if it's a teacher, because you still have to pay them unemployment.
Sure.
And you still have to pay, you know, some of their health insurance. I think with COBRA, I'm not really sure how much that continues, but, you know, you've lost most of the health insurance, and you still have to pay health insurance, unemployment. So it's a significant amount when you have, you know, if you're going to lose 20% of your workforce, or 10% of your workforce, we have, you know, 400 positions.
Now, I know that there are, the hearing you said you had just last night as we're taping, there's another hearing coming up on, I guess, I guess it's Budget Deliberations on March 7th for the committee, and then the final vote is scheduled for March 14th. And then the hope is it goes to town meeting, and the town meetings are scheduled in Newbury on April 24th, in Rowley on April 30th, and Salisbury's the last one to hold it on May 8th.
Right.
Now, if the budget doesn't get approved, let's say by two of the three towns, and I guess it's a process where the budget is resubmitted back to the towns for a second town meeting within, I guess, a 45-day period of time. So there is a chance for a second town meeting to look at, so let's say two of the three towns, for whatever reason, vote no on the budget, and now it has to obviously be resubmitted and go back to the whole process again, and go back to town meeting. Your hope in terms of the citizens out there, folks who have kids, folks who don't have children in the school, is to come to those meetings, to be involved, to be engaged? How do, how do the citizens out there, how do you want them to become engaged in the process?
Well, we have started, at the Triton School Committee, we've started a movement with other regional school districts around the state. Actually, Marissa Wallen is spearheading this, and Tina, and I hope they come on your show to explain it, they know a lot more about it. But they've established a website and a community of people around the state to advocate for looking at regional school systems, because they're more expensive. And they've actually had some good success, because we have our five representatives, because Newbury and Rowley, she have different representatives.
State, you mean state representatives?
Yeah, so we have Jim Kelkhorst here in Salisbury, they have Lenny Mira, Newbury and Salisbury, and Rowley has Bruce Tye, we have Katie Ives, and who's the one?
The Senate.
Bruce Tye, Katie, Kelkhorst, and Mira.
Right.
Yeah, so those four. And they've formed a coalition together, oh, and Brad Hill.
Oh, Brad Hill, Ipswich area, I think.
Yeah, he's got Rowley. To advocate with the Ways and Means Committee. They have a letter and a, you know, a lot of advocacy with the Ways and Means Committee right now, I forget the name of the Senate bill, but what it's saying is if there's any new revenue in the state, it's supposed to be a lot of new revenue now, because the economy's doing, you know, decently, "Can we fund our old initiatives, our old mandates before we consider new programs?" So that's part of what's going on now. But anybody who wants to advocate for their own school district can write to their representatives and say, "You know, we understand that we have a lot of unfunded mandates, schools can only tax so much to get their money, can you please help us out at the state level?" Because it really is a state problem. One of the things that they're working on, and you can put this in your letter, they were asking for 100% reimbursement on regional transportation. This year, we had 65% reimbursement for the circuit breaker, which means when your special ed costs exceed a certain amount, you'll get 75% if they call it circuit breaker.
Right.
And $100 per student for Chapter 78, which would give us, altogether, if we got that, would give us $600,000. So roughly $200,000 per town.
You were saying that earlier, we were speaking, the Senate Tower is working on some sort of initiative, is this the initiative you're talking about?
Well, he's, he's banded together with other, our other representatives, Brad, Jim, and written a strong advocacy position with the Ways and Means, saying, "Would you please consider this?" And they call it "Fund Us, Fund the Old Now," or I forget the name of it. And Marissa Wallen is pushing this statewide, and it's a coalition-
Yeah.
-of, I think, 60 districts.
Now, I know, having watched some of the meetings, and also I think it was quoted in the paper, the superintendent here in the Triton District, Brian Forgette, was saying that it's a perfect storm in terms of the budget here.
Yeah.
Is he talking about those increases and the fact that you have these increases? What do you mean, what did he mean, did you think, by that perfect storm?
Perfect storm? Well, usually, you know, you can manage. You know, every, every year, you get something new that you have to take care of. For instance, the charter schools, which cost us $800,000 for 50 kids, that we could easily absorb in our system. Choice, you pay, when kids go to another district-
You pay out to that district.
You pay out, but we also get money in, and we're-
Students that come in.
Yeah, so we're to the good with choice in and out.
So there are more students coming into Triton-
Yes.
-from other districts that are going out from Triton.
Right, and going out. So that-
That's a positive.
That's a positive, and, you know, usually, I've seen it as high as $200,000, I think this year, it's a little bit down. It all depends on who's going in, who's going out.
Right.
And you can absorb it, but when healthcare goes up $600,000, I mean, you can, you can absorb little increments-
Incremental increases, yeah.
And you can say this, and you can say that, but, you know, your electricity costs, your plowing, heat, people go, "Why does it cost so much?" These things keep going up, and you can keep paying it, but when it all comes to four, special ed, when we send kids to collaborative schools, like Crest, I was on the Crest Board, North Shore Collaborative, they establish a budget, they tell you what the budget is.
Right.
You don't get to say, "I don't, I don't like your budget, why don't you?"
Just hand you the bill.
They just hand you the bill. Whittier does that, they hand the town the bill. Essex Aggie, here's the bill. Charter school, here's the bill. Triton, we're not responsible for Whittier and Essex, but we have to argue the bill or advocate for the bill.
For your, yeah.
And, you know, the bill is the bill. I mean, if you, I welcome everybody to look at it.
Now, the budget starts July 1st, new fiscal year kicks in, assuming that, you know, obviously there are problems with the budgets, people have problems, the selectmen in some towns don't vote for it, or the town meeting doesn't vote for it, then it's now, you're up against the clock, it's July 1. I imagine the state comes in and says, "You're going to operate on a 1/12 budget, you know, one month at a time, here's July's budget, here's August's budget, here's September's budget," until eventually you have a budget-
So that would be 36 positions cut.
That would be, at that level.
At that level.
And then your district, your school committee would determine, based on the recommendations of the superintendent and the staff, obviously, which of those 36 positions, who makes up those 36 positions that'll be laid off?
Yeah, but remember, you can't touch special ed.
Right, by law.
Because special law is, special ed is determined by state law, federal law. You can say, "I think 10 kids could be in that math group, you can't have more than eight." They tell you exactly what, and it's good that they do, because I worked in special ed-
It provides quality education for those people.
-for many years, and if you don't have those laws, there's, it's not good for the kids. It has to be good for the kids.
And now, in terms of the school committee, the school committee, sometimes school committees get divided on what should be cut, what's not cut, I'm not sure. How, in terms of the Triton District with the three towns being represented, is it kind of a unanimous type position that, you know, "We must advocate for the quality of education, we must, we need these positions?"
Yeah, I think it's interesting that this whole committee, all nine of us, there's three from each town, were united in the advocacy of this budget.
Oh, good.
And I have, I have a lot of empathy for Rowley because of that new school addition that they're putting in, and their infrastructure.
They have new building projects going on.
Yeah, they have a $34 million project, but the school was, it needed it, you know, a long time ago, but you can only be, it's like an old building.
So in the districts, for the people, maybe that don't have children out there, that the town is responsible in terms of a building for pre-K to sixth grade-
Sixth grade.
And then they go regionally, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th.
Right, right, and the towns are responsible. Well, right now, we're figuring out the landlord-tenant relationship with the board of selectmen, so I don't want to say anything out of turn, because it might change. But right now, the school is responsible for his own, you know, their own-
Right.
The community's responsible.
Right, and so now, you're saying, in terms of the school committee, the nine members, three, three, and three, they're all elected for three-year terms, right?
Three years, yeah.
And this is your second, third-year term?
Yes, this is my first of my second term.
Right, so you're in your fourth year of your-
Yes, yes. So every year, every year, each town elects one representative, so there's nine of us. But the point is that we're all very united, and that, because we know, you know, what the schools need. And when you're elected to a school committee, that's your job.
Sure.
You approve a budget, you hire a superintendent, you make policy.
Right.